Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is April the 26th, 2022. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the Century Jury Room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granberry, Texas. We're very fortunate today to have with us Pastor Mary Carden, and we all know this place well. We probably know your church better than any other location in Olive Hood County. At the Brazos Covenant Ministries, we have a lot of meetings there. So Pastor Carden, would you please come up and give us the invocation?
Father, I feel grateful to you today that your word says that every court on the earth is under your eye and under your care. So today, we're here and we appeal to the highest court, which is yours, and we simply say oversee this court. And Father, we decree as one, your kingdom come. Your will be done on earth as it is in heaven, and let your truth and your justice rule mightily in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you all very much. I want to remind all of you, we got a pretty much of a...
...full house here today, and if anybody looks to speak on any agenda items, the sheriff and the deputy Smith back there had what is called a total participation form that must be filled out, and if this year, we will then kind of do this line, mark it, and then hand them to me. And for everybody who has a question, there's a maximum of 30 minutes on any agenda item. So that's what we will do, is we will count up as 15 minutes for, and 15 minutes against. So if we have more than three for the agenda, and more than three against, we will divide it, so everybody will have an equal number of minutes to make their pursuit of saving. Okay. So the first thing we have, this is a very pleasant argument, and that's a special presentation. We have a special proclamation today to declare May 4th, 2022, International Firefighters Day. And we have, of course, the Hoover Velasquez very... And if this is going on right, and the order laying down, maybe some of the Hoover Velasquez involved, because it's mostly under our office, and then also proclamation to declare May 15th to the 21st, 2022, as National Police Week. These are both very, very important proclamations. I have spoken to Mrs. Julia, and she would like for me to go ahead and read them, but I don't want to stand up next to me here, but if she has the names that she spoke, read all this by me. If there's two somebody with us, it will be the police.
While the judge is coming forth, we would like to read aloud so that you'll know that we are having an event at the firefighter park on that Saturday from 9:30 on, and we will be honoring Marty Marciniak from Station 1, Kenneth Bell Sr. from Station 20, Matt Vaughn from Station 30, Paul McKinney from Station 40, Lieutenant Melissa Welch from Station 50, Ty Cox from Station 60, Stevie Head from Station 70, Johnny Hutchison from Station 80, and Kelly Harris from Station 90. Judge, thank you for being there that day for us. It's everyone's welcome. We will also be doing a special presentation to Station 1 in honor of J.C. Campbell. So if you can come on Saturday, the 7th at 9:30, we'd like to have everyone there. Thank you. You want her to do the thing about the Police Week at the same time?
Yes, please. Give us your name, because we know who you are.
I'm Laura Fisher, and Kevin Sklar and I co-chair the National Police Week. This year, on Saturday, May the 14th, everybody is welcome to come. We will start at 10:00 a.m. We will be honoring our current law enforcement and remembering our 2021 calendar year fallen national officers. This year, we will again honor our Hood County law enforcement with Officer Spotlight, and we will be adding a Beyond the Blue Award. Our Officer Spotlight recipients are as follows. Sergeant Cliff Clemmons with the Granberry Police Department, Deputy Nathan Livingston with the Hood County Sheriff's Office, Trooper Shane Neal with the Texas Department of Public Safety, Lake Ranger Carlos Sanchez with the Brazos River Authority, and Deputy Constable Mark Neermin with Hood County Constable's Office. Our Beyond the Blue Awards recipients are Detective Richie Hott with the Granberry Police Department, Officer Kevin Clapp with the Granberry Police Department, Lieutenant Denise Lizon with the Hood County Sheriff's Department, and our Sheriff Roger Deeds with the Hood County Sheriff's Department. We would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our Hood County law enforcement officers for all of their dedication and service to our community.
Okay. Now, it is indeed my honor and pleasure to read. First, since it's the earliest in date, I'm going to read the proclamation to designate May 4th, 2022 as International Firefighters Day. Whereas International Firefighters Day is observed each year on the 4th of May, on this date, you are invited to remember the past firefighters who have died while serving our community or dedicate their lives to protecting the safety of all of us. At the same time, we can show our support and appreciation to the firefighters worldwide who continue to protect us so well throughout the year. And whereas by proudly wearing and displaying blue and red ribbons, pinned together, or by participating in a memorial or recognition event, we can show our gratitude to firefighters everywhere. The D.I.F.F. or DIF ribbons are linked to colors symbolic of the main elements firefighters work with, red for fire and blue for water. These colors also are internationally recognized as representing emergency service. And whereas Friends of Memorial Lane's mission is to honor and remember all first responders, a special ceremony will be observed on Saturday, May 7th, 2022, at the Jim Burks Firefighters Memorial Park located in Granberry, Texas, beginning at 9:00 a.m. And whereas Hood County has nine fire stations that are manned by men and women as volunteers, giving free service to our community, creating a value to our county that we will never be able to place a dollar value to. And now therefore, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim May 4th, 2022, as International Firefighters Day. And May 7th, 2022, as a day that all citizens are invited to join Friends of Memorial Lane on location at the park to both honor and remember the 2022 Firefighters of the Year, and to present a special flag to Station 1 in memory of J.C. Campbell. We also declare this day as a time we recognize the value of a firefighter. Signed this 26th day of April, 2022, Ron Massengill County Judge, Kevin Andrews, Commissioner 1, Jack Wilson, Commissioner 3, Ron Cotton, Commissioner 2, David Eagle, Commissioner 4. This is a very proud moment for us. I mean, our firefighters are out there putting their lives on the line for us every day, and especially now in this burn ban season where we're experiencing all these fires. And this is something that the people of Hood County have recognized, and we have an excellent volunteer fire department, and we have excellent volunteers and citizens of our community who honor these guys, and we do our best to provide the best equipment and the best that we could do for everybody. And we're very proud to have a very good fire chief in Jeff Young. He looks out for them, and our volunteer firefighters and all nine departments are very special and really worthy of our, really, the best that we can give them. I mean, they do this for free, and I have seen them in action, and they are the most dedicated people that you can imagine. So this is a very important thing. So thank you, Julia, and thank you, Fay, and thank you for all of you being here. And this is Bob Pennell. He's also known as Julia's husband. Like I've known as Brenda's husband, you're known as Julia's husband, and of course Judge Gwynne here. And now I'd like to read the proclamation for National Police Week, another very important part of our community and why we have such a wonderful community. So this proclamation to designate May 15th, 20... May 15th to 2020... May 15th to May 21st, 2022, as National Police Week. Whereas our law enforcement agency plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which have been guaranteed by the Constitution to every American citizen, and whereas it is important that all people throughout our community know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of our police departments, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property by also protecting them against violence or intimidation. And whereas we encourage all citizens to set aside a time during National Police Week, May 15th to May 21st, 2022, to recognize our local law enforcement with a prayer of protection and support. And whereas Friends of Memorial Lane will be holding a ceremony on Saturday, May 14th, 2022, at the Jim Burks Firefighter Memorial Park, Granberry, Texas, at 9:30 a.m. to honor our local enforcement servants for their leadership and service to our community. And whereas many have gone beyond the call of duty, and we have a community where these faithful have rendered dedicated service, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and securities for each of us. Now therefore, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as National Police Week, and May 14th, 2022, as this day in which our community will join hands with others to say thank you to our local services from the sheriff, police, B.R.A., state troopers, and EMS branches. Signed this 26th day of April, 2022, by me is Ron Massengill County Judge, Kevin Andrews, Commissioner 1, Ronald Cotton, Commissioner 2, Jack Wilson, Commissioner 3, David Eagle, Commissioner 4. Again, we have the best of the best here that put their lives out in front. They run toward danger to make our lives secure. Without our Sheriff's Department and our legal enforcement community and our firefighters, we wouldn't have a county if it weren't for them. So it is my pleasure to stand up here and recognize both the firefighters and the law enforcement. Thank you, Mary Carden, for blessing this day today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Okay. And by the way, and thank everybody that has anything to do with Memorial Lane, Friends of Memorial Lane. We have the best exhibit and probably the only exhibit in the United States.
The only known... The only known park in the United States that has all three firefighter, law enforcement, and military in one location. And coming soon, the Space Force will be at it.
How about that? The Space Force. I mean, this is... This is unbelievable. And this is due to these people right here. So if Julia Pennell ever calls you and asks you to do anything, my advice to you is just to immediately...
Say yes.
Say yes, because it's a lot easier, and it will... Things will go a lot easier.
Get your checkbook out.
Please do that. Okay? So let me hand these to you, okay? Thank you all, all. Appreciate it. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Service Awards. And Ms. Wilber, and we have four today, don't we?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll let you take this over.
Our first award this morning goes to Kelly Jones with five years of service.
Thank you for your service. Here's something for you.
Thank you.
All my employees are very valued and working hard, and she works in open records, and you know how much fun that is. So she stays plenty busy, so thank you.
I'd like to also say that she's the wife of... She's also the wife of Dan Jones, the pastor of the Trippercalls Cowboy Church, so she's got double duty kind of coming up on weekends. So congratulations, Kelly. Next, we have Tracy McKinney. Is that correct?
That is correct, with 10 years of service.
She must be held up in the office.
She works for the V.A.'s office?
Yes, sir.
Let's have her back there working real nice. For 10 years, so this is for 10 years. Next is Melissa Bosiewicz, 15 years.
15 years of service. She's unable to attend this morning.
What department does she work in?
She's in the Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff's Office, okay.
Yes.
Terry Green, I know who he is.
Yes.
And 20 years.
Yes, sir. 20 years of service with Roden Bridge.
You know, I'm going to have to get on to Donald Lenny for working you so hard that you have to come in with the cane.
Yes.
That's what 20 years will get you, on Road Ops there.
Yes, sir.
Ms. McFadyo.
Well, Terry, on behalf of Hood County, we'd like to say thank you for your 20 years of service and keeping Donald Lenny in line.
All right. There you go. Thank you.
Okay.
These are all number six.
Everything is number six.
Everything's number six.
How many for and how many against?
Well, it's kind of hard to tell. This one, I don't know. It's a question mark.
We're just talking.
And this one here, I don't know which one. It's protesting, David Eagle. I don't know whether it's for or against, but we know these are against. So there's 11.
Let's give everybody three minutes. Okay, we have 11 speakers.
You can go right to six first?
Huh?
Maybe we'll go to six when we begin?
Well, but it isn't.
We got 12 now. Better even do the agenda first, or wait until we get to number six? It's on number six miscellaneous. Want to do all the other stuff first?
Well, we have consent.
No, I was asking, are you going to follow the agenda is all I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
This one, we're going to number six, which is way down on the agenda, the miscellaneous.
On the consent agenda... Yeah, that's right. Does any of the commissioners wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Did y'all make the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero to approve the consent agenda. Okay. Now that... You're not going to believe this, but Road Ops, Mr. Donald Lenny has nothing today for a long time, and this will blow your mind, is that Clint Head has no development issues for the first time in a couple of years. Mr. Head, you sure about that?
Seven hours remaining.
Okay. That brings us to the financial. Ms. Becky Kidd, our county auditor.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. You've all been given advance packets regarding invoices and information there, too. You've also been given a spreadsheet with payments over $10,000. Are there any questions regarding this information? And the total invoices are $361,386.57.
I'll make the motion to approve the payments. Pay the bills.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Cotton, pay the bills.
Pay the bills.
Okay. And I hear...
Yeah, I'll second it.
Ms. McFadyo is second, so any discussion concerning the payment of the bills? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay. What else you have, Ms. Kidd?
The next item are the monthly reports, which we have received in our office and reviewed. Some of them are still a work in progress, but please accept the list as it's presented.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was talking. Is everything all right?
Yes, sir.
So you recommend payment?
We recommend accepting these monthly reports.
Okay. All right. We have Ms. Kidd up here recommending we accept the monthly reports. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the report for Precinct, is it 1?
3.
3. Right, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Next item.
The 2022 review of the Justice of the Peace Precinct 4 financial records. We ask that you accept this report as presented.
Do I hear a motion? I move that we accept the 2022 review of Justice of Peace Precinct 4 financials.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to accept the report for Commissioner... I mean, for Justice of Precinct 4, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Next item.
Judge Commissioners, you've all been given a copy of a resolution calling for the county's limited tax bond series 2013 for redemption prior to maturity. This is a loan I'd like to get paid off this year. It will save about $35,000, and that's somebody's salary. So this is something I hope that you sign, and we move forward in this, and then the next court will make that payment.
What is the total amount that we're paying off early?
It's $1.5 million.
That shows that the county's in pretty good financial status.
Yes, sir. And once we pay the Cresson bypass this year, we will have started out at $32 million when I took office, and now we're down to 12.
And who's...
Bypass?
After we pay the bypass this year, we will be down to owing $12 million, and we are the envy of a lot of other counties.
I think that's because they got a pretty good audacity to that. She skins that nickel, that buffalo on that nickel twice before she lets it go up there. So I think she's been a good officer. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do I hear a motion to pay the bonds off early?
Judge, yeah, I'll make the motion to... For a resolution calling for us to pay off the tax bond series 2013.
Second. Hey, was it... And by Commissioner Cotton to pay the bonds off early, presented by Ms. Kidd, submitted by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion again carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. This brings us down to miscellaneous. Item number one, consider and take appropriate action to issue Lake Granberry Harbor HOA 10 vouchers for the Hood County Citizens' Collection Station with an expiration date of September 30th, 2022, to assist a community cleanup effort. We have a gene back here.
Yes.
Is this a good idea?
Yes, sir. They... We issued 10 vouchers to them last December, set to expire in June, and they have been cleaning up and making great improvements out there. There were lots of lots... vacant lots that had lots of items that had been placed on them, and they've been working very hard to remove those items, and we would like to allow them 10 more vouchers to continue their cleanup efforts.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to allow 10 vouchers for the Hood County Citizens' Collection Station to Lake Granberry Harbor HOA.
Second. Do I hear a motion that may, by Commissioner Andrews, to allow 10 vouchers for Lake Granberry Harbor, second by Commissioner Eagle? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay. Yes, I'm glad we have Mr. Jeff Young here today, here to discuss and take appropriate action regarding current fire threat and county burn ban. Chief Jeff Young.
Judge Commissioners, so our KBDI, which is our Keats and Bender drought index, dropped 77 points yesterday alone, which brings us to an average of 420. We've seen an improvement in the one hour and 10 hour fuel moistures, so I think if there's ever a time to consider lifting the burn ban, now may be the time to do that. If conditions worsen and get back to where they were, then we can always come back and ask for it again. But as of right now, if we're going to lift the burn ban now, may be the good time to do that.
Have you had different citizens of Hood County asking that the burn ban be lifted so that...
Daily. And... Daily. We get... My admin's probably fielding 30 calls a day, asking when they're going to lift the burn ban.
Okay. So we can always institute it if conditions worsen, hope.
Yes, sir.
Good Lord, Ms. Mary... Pastor Mary Carden, please, and that gentleman to your right there, would you also ask him for a little assistance, too? And the lady to the right... To your right, if the three of you would pay extra hard for these sorts of good rain, I'm talking like five inches minimum, okay?
Not all at once. It'd be nice to spread that out over a week. I don't want to go from burn ban to flood, so...
Yeah.
Hard to please.
Hey, Commissioner Andrews has made a motion to accept the monthly reports presented by Ms. Kidd, submitted by Mr. Eagle. By Commissioner, I'll put you to the left, Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the reports, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion again carries five zero. Ms. Kidd, anything else?
Yes, sir, we have the 2022 review of the Justice of the Peace Precinct One financial records. You've been given copies of this information, and we ask that you accept this report as presented.
I'll make the motion to accept the report as presented.
Okay, I hear second. Okay, Commissioner Cotton has made a motion that we accept the report for precinct, is it one?
Three.
Three. Right, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item.
The 2022 review of the Justice of the Peace Precinct Four financial records. We ask that you accept this report as presented.
I hear motion. I move that we accept the 2022 review of Justice of the Peace Precinct Four financials.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to accept the report for Commissioner, I mean for Justice of Precinct Four, second by Commissioner Cotton. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item.
Judge Commissioners, you've all been given a copy of a resolution calling for the county's limited tax bond series 2013 for redemption prior to maturity. This is a loan I'd like to get paid off this year. It will save about $35,000, and that's somebody's salary. So this is something I hope that you sign, and we move forward in this, and then the next court will make that payment.
What is the total amount that we're paying off early?
It's 1.5 million.
That shows that the county's in pretty good financial status.
Yes, sir, and once we pay the Cresson bypass this year, we will have started out at 32 million when I took office, and now we're down to 12.
Bypass?
After we pay the bypass this year, we will be down to owing $12 million, and we are the envy of a lot of other counties.
I think that's because they got a pretty good audacity that she skins that nickel, that buffalo on that nickel twice before she lets it go up there, so I think she's doing a good job, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I hear a motion to pay the bonds off early.
Judge, yeah, I'll make the motion to, for a resolution calling for us to pay off the tax bond series 2013.
Second.
Hey, Wilson, and by Commissioner Cotton to pay the bonds off early presented by Ms. Kidd, submitted by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion again carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this brings us down to miscellaneous. Item number one, consider and take appropriate action to issue Lake Grandberry Harbor HOA 10 vouchers for the Hood County Citizens' Collection Station with an expiration date of September 30, 2022, to assist a community cleanup effort. We have a genuine fact here.
Yes.
Is this a good idea?
Yes, sir. They, we issued 10 vouchers to them last December, set to expire in June, and they have been cleaning up and making great improvements out there. There were lots of lots, vacant lots that had lots of items that had been placed on them, and they've been working very hard to remove those items, and we would like to allow them 10 more vouchers to continue their cleanup efforts.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to allow 10 vouchers for the Hood County Citizens' Collection Station to Lake Granberry Harbor HOA.
Second. We made a motion today by Commissioner Andrews to allow 10 vouchers for Lake Granberry Harbor, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Yes, I'm glad we have Mr. Jeff Young here today, here to discuss and take appropriate action regarding current fire threat and county burn ban. Chief Jeff Young.
Judge Commissioners, so our KBDI, which is our Keech and Bender drought index, dropped 77 points yesterday alone, which brings us to an average of 420. We've seen an improvement in the one hour and 10 hour fuel moistures, so I think if there's ever a time to consider lifting the burn ban, now may be the time to do that. If conditions worsen and get back to where they were, then we can always come back and ask for it again, but as of right now, if we're going to lift the burn ban now, may be the good time to do it.
Have you had different citizens of Hood County asking that the burn ban be lifted so that?
Daily. Daily. We get, my admin's probably fielding 30 calls a day, asking when they're going to lift the burn ban.
Okay. So we can always institute it if conditions worsen, hope?
Yes, sir.
Good Lord, Ms. Mary, Pastor Mary, pardon please, and that gentleman to your right there, would you also ask him for a little assistance, too? And the lady to the right, to your right, if the three of you would pay extra hard for these, for some good rain, I'm talking like five inches minimum, okay?
Not all at once, it'd be nice to spread that out over a week. I don't want to go from burn ban to flood, so. Yeah, hard to please.
I got a question, Judge. So what did you say the KDI?
The KBDI right now is at 420 as an average.
What's bad?
Bad is when we get up over 5 and 1/4, and 550 is usually when I'm starting to really think hard about asking for a burn ban.
And KD, KBDI means what?
That's the Keech and Bender drought index.
So that's a standard that's used across the country, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Just letting the people know.
Well, and so the other source of information that I rely on is the Texas Forest Service. They have a whole team and division of people that do nothing but track the moisture in the one hour and 10 hour fuels. I had a conversation with our coordinator last week, and he even said, if there's a time that you're going to lift the burn ban, now would probably be the time to do it, because the fuel moistures are in those one hour and 10 hour fuels. So the threat of a rapidly spreading grass fire like we had on Big L right now is reduced. That's not to say that it's not going to come back, because they're forecasting a very dry, very windy summer, so there's a good chance we could be back under a burn ban in three weeks, for all I know. But if we get that five inches of rain spread out over a week, I just want to make sure we get that part in there, then that'll definitely help us. But, you know, right now, every time somebody wakes up with dew on their windshield, they feel like there's enough moisture, they should go ahead and burn their stuff, so.
Okay. Please let everybody spit all of you that we do have it now's the time to get your work done, because you never know what's going to happen by.
Oh, yes, sir. Oddly enough, as much as I hate social media, I will be going to post that on Facebook as soon as it's approved or disapproved, so.
All right. Does any of the commissioners wish to make an appropriate motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion that we remove the burn ban.
Second. Yeah, motion made by Commissioner.
Andrews.
To lift the burn ban, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero to lift the burn ban.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Judge. Item number three, discuss and take appropriate action, including line item transfer, to raise salaries for two assistant county attorney positions. Mr. Matt Mills.
Yes, Judge Commissioners, I don't think we need any actual action on it. I've talked to the auditor about it, and for the rest of this fiscal year, we can cover this out of our hot check fund, but that's not a permanent solution. So I just kind of wanted to leave it on here to let you know that we'll be asking for something in the next fiscal year, starting in October. Basically, where we're at is, I know we can't really compete with Tarrant County, but our office can't compete with the office next door. We're almost $14,000 less per assistant than they are in the DA's office. They've got five lawyer assistants making an average of $84,516. We have two assistants making an average of $70,858. So I was never going to ask for any raises or help, except we had somebody who's leaving today, and I posted it on the TDCAA Job Bank, which is the Prosecutor Association for Texas, and I've only done that twice before, and both times I got a flurry of resumes. This time, it's like crickets chirping. And in case you're thinking, well, maybe people just don't like your office, no, this is a statewide deal. I mean, across the state, prosecutors' offices are having trouble. The DA had trouble posting, getting a job filled at a higher salary than what we had originally had, so it's been a problem. So we're going to cover the increase out of our account, and then we'll just be asking for more in the next fiscal year, so I don't have to drop it back down. But I don't think we need any action for today. That just kind of a summary of where we are and the trouble we're having. Any questions?
So you're not asking if we have to take any action here?
Right, I mean, we've got, if we started these raises in May, we could cover it with about $6,000 or $7,000 out of hot checks, which we can do for the rest of the fiscal year. But we just can't do that in perpetuity, of course. So right now, we're okay, but this is a real problem. I mean, that's half of my lawyer assistants are gone as of today, so it's going to be a real challenge, and I don't want to just get a warm body, just anybody, right? So it's.
I think it's something that we address during budget cycle, which is coming up, you know, shortly.
Right.
And we can address it at that point.
Yeah, yeah, so just, this is just kind of a bug in your ear that, I mean, I've, I cut my budget when I first started four times in a row. I mean, I've tried to be as conservative as possible, I just, I'm stuck. So I'm asking for help, not right now, but later, so just let y'all know that. But for now, we're good.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mills. I appreciate you bringing this up. I appreciate you having the foresight to come up here and give us a preview of what you need without having to be an emergency situation. Thank you very much.
Anything else? All right, thank y'all.
Okay. Next, item number four, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the district attorney request to purchase two D-20 truck food or labor bottles, Ford F-150 XL food cab, four-wheel-drive pickups, not to exceed $110,000 total from Fund 55. These vehicles, we replace vehicles currently in use by the DA's task force officers to win a 2013 Chevrolet Silverado and a 2012 Chevrolet Tahoe. We have, oh, it lives right in Flair, another person gave it here, and we got the best vehicle here. This is loading it for us.
Well, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I, like Mr. Mills, do not like coming to the court mid-budget cycle and asking for expenditures like this. However, we're faced with a situation where, right now, we have two vehicles utilized by my task force officers, Dan Bradshaw and Pete Wilkerson, that require significant repairs. In fact, earlier in the agenda for this same Commissioners' Court, we requested a budget transfer from our investigation line item to increase our vehicle maintenance line item, because we had $12.98, I think, in that vehicle maintenance line item, left for the remainder of our budget year. Now, we have worked with Mr. Tillman, the purchasing agent, to try to find some vehicles that could be purchased for my investigators. We talked about it a few months ago, and then Mr. Tillman found some vehicles, I think, that were going to run about $85,000. We ultimately didn't get it to the court, but those vehicles are now gone, and now those are going to run at least $95,000, I think. So they've gone up in price. The other thing to consider, and I'm more than happy to try to limp these vehicles along, I don't know that they'll make it to the next budget cycle, but if the court deems it appropriate, we can attempt to do that. However, if we do wait for the next budget cycle, we face a significant lead time before those vehicles can come online for my investigators. We can either try to start the process now and get those vehicles in the pipeline, or we can wait till the budget cycle, hoping that our current vehicles will last, and if we do that, there's a decent chance, I think, that I'd come back to the court asking for additional money in my vehicle maintenance budget, or we can try to get those vehicles online right now. So I'll let Mr. Tillman tell you some additional information about the process.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Yes, originally, we were looking at two Ford F-150 XL trim, four-by-four crew cab pickups. Those, the two that I found vanished very quickly. If we wished to stick with those modest vehicles, we're probably looking at 2023s, and probably wouldn't even be available until early to mid next year, if at that, and probably at a price equal or more than the options that we have available today. The options that I found last week were basically the same vehicle that we were looking for with a V6 hybrid engine, looking at nearly $96,000 for the two. Or I found a couple with the V8 engine in an XLT trim, so a little nicer trim, but basically identical otherwise, for just under $103,000 for both vehicles. Now, keep in mind, these vehicles have been ordered from Ford, they've not been manufactured yet, so there is a lead time on these as well, but it would be this year, hopefully not in the too far distant future. But other than these, we're definitely looking well into 2023.
And a summary of the problems associated with the current vehicles, I'll give to the court right now, and if the court has additional information, my investigators are here to provide additional information about the repairs and the problems with those vehicles, because they drive them on a daily basis. But for the 2013 Chevy Silverado, it needs a front-end suspension that needs to be rebuilt. The transmission is slipping and needs to be rebuilt or replaced. The rear axle needs to be repaired. For the 2012 Chevy Tahoe, the transmission needs to be repaired or replaced. The rear end needs to be repaired or replaced due to vibration and bearing noise, and the front-end suspension needs to be repaired or replaced. So these are significant problems associated with the vehicles that the investigators are currently driving.
Even if we approve, you know, the request today, you're several months at best before you get anything, what's the plan in the meantime if you, you know, if these, you know, two vehicles you have now totally, you know, crap out?
Well.
Pardon the French, but that's the bottom line.
That's a good question. There's a chance that we could utilize personal vehicles for that stuff and reimburse for mileage and things like that, but, you know, that, no option is ideal. You know, if we wait for the next budget, who knows when we'll get them? If we do it now, it's still going to be a few months out before they actually come online, and we're just hoping that they're going to last either until the new ones come online, or until the next budget cycle is put in place, and we can order them at that point.
And there are a couple pool vehicles that we are sharing at the moment, you know, if worse came to worse, not an ideal option, but.
Four-wheel drive is necessary?
I'll let my investigator speak.
We go to different places in all in the county, like Brazos River Acres, where we need that four-wheel drive to get up to there if it's raining, something like that. Those roads are in bad shape down there, where we need to get to those people, where the children are and stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it sounds like you need the vehicles, the timing is the issue, but Fund 55, that's our capital, and we do that all year long. I mean, so we don't have to wait until budget cycle. If we've got the money in Fund 55, it's going to take, I don't know how many months to get the vehicle. Longer you wait, the more you're going to be putting into broke-down vehicles, so.
Yes, sir.
I just don't see how we got any choice. My opinion.
Well, any other questions or comment? Do I hear appropriate motion?
Yes, I will make a motion that we approve the purchase of two F-150 XL crew cab four-wheel-drive pickups with a total not to exceed of $110,000 out of Fund 55.
Excuse me, if you would, XL or XLT?
Okay. What, you know, basically, it's going to be what's available, but there's still a limit of $110,000 for the two.
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the purchase of two, made at both four-wheel drive vehicles, $110,000, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
Okay. Item number five, discuss and take appropriate action to allocate up to $5,000 per year to Brazos Valley Soil and Water Conservation District, $10,000 total for 2021 and 2022 for pass costs associated with easement enforcement, O&amp;M inspections, maintenance, and land treatment measures for two USDA NRCS flood control dams located in Hood County, that is, Palux River WS NRCS Site 16, and Rutgers Creek WS NRCS Site 1.
Judge, I put this on the agenda, we did this two years ago, and did not get to this last year, and so Mr. Larry Wilkins, First National Bank, is here to present this to you, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Wilkins, I think I know that gentleman to your media right there, do you want to introduce?
Yes, sir. My name's Larry Wilkins, and I'm here today with Joe Langdon. We sit on the board of the Brazos Valley Soil and Water Conservation District. We're here today requesting funds for the maintenance of two flood control dams that are in the county. The agreements, I passed out two packets there. The agreements for the two sites, one is the Palux River Watershed, Site Number 16, and then the other one is the Rutgers Creek Watershed, Site Number 1. It gives an aerial of the dams themselves, and then it has a copy of the agreement. The Rutgers Creek Agreement was signed quite a while back, June 12, 1967, and then the other agreement for the Palux River Watershed was signed September 14, 1976. So a little before my time, and that's why I put those packets together for y'all to look at. But basically, it's an agreement that we share with the county for maintenance of these dams. Fortunately, we only have two in the county, and they're in good shape. But on an annual basis, we'd have to go out, and we have certain measures in place to make sure they don't run livestock on them and get overgrazed. Sometimes we'll have to do brush control and so forth, so the dams themselves don't get damaged with certain shrubs and roots and so forth, make sure nobody digs in the dams. We have certain easements across private property to do that. Joe's been on the board a lot longer than I have, so I have him up here to help me answer any questions that y'all may have, but a couple years ago, I came to the court here asking for $5,000. Basically, when we do work on these dams, there are state funds available, but we have to put up 10% of the cost of it, which that's going to be these funds that we're asking for, and the state will cover 90% of any type of work that we have, whether it be fertilizing, shredding, brush control, fixing fences to keep out livestock and so forth. And so that's what we're here. Last year, we kind of had some challenges putting board meetings together and so forth, because we have a public building, and coming out of COVID, there was restrictions on employees only in the USDA building that we have here in Granberry. So I failed to get a request in in 2021, so at the beginning of this year, I put two requests in and was told that I'd need to bring it back into the Commissioners' Court to get approval. So really, what we're asking for is $5,000 a year for the maintenance, for our portion of the funds, to be put toward the 10% requirement, and if I could, I'd like to have a line item, maybe on the budget every year to where I wouldn't have the obligation to come back every year in front of y'all to get it. If I can't, that's fine, I will, but I'm just trying to expedite some of this maybe.
Any questions?
Any questions or comments from anyone? I think it's something we have been doing.
Yes, Judge, I'm going to make a motion that we allocate up to $5,000 per year to the Brazos Valley Soil and Water Conservation District for a total of $10,000 right now for 2021 and 22 for pass costs associated with easement enforcement, O&amp;M inspections, maintenance, and land treatment measures for the two USDA-NRCS flood control dams located in Hood County, i.e. the Palux River WS NRCS Site 16, and Rutgers Creek WS NRCS Site 1, and that we also create a line item for that item for future reference per year. That's my motion. Becky's not here to tell us what line item, but we'll. Becky's not here to tell us what line item, but we'll figure that out.
Okay. Basically, just a motion for $5,000 a year, which is what you're recommending for the Brazos Valley Soil and Water Conservation District with the two dams throughout Hood County.
Yes, sir.
Stated by Commissioner Eagle. Do I do a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner. By Commissioner Wilson. In further discussion on the contribution of $5,000 per year to Brazos Valley Soil and Water Conservation District. If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Commissioner Langdon.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, item number six, we have, pardon these people that have asked to go ahead and do this, and this is the subject, and I guess we'll go ahead and take up, you do 13 and two and a half minutes apiece for them, and they look like they're equally divided on your four and ten, this motion, and we have the actual contract from the vicar staff. We got it later than the noon Wednesday, so we have a special meeting, that's to commence as soon as we're ready for this particular court. But for the people that have signed up to speak, it will be in importance with what they're doing right now, unless somebody disagrees with that procedure.
Nope. Well, I would like, I think there's a lot of interest in this topic, and I think I'd just as soon let everybody have their piece. Let's go ahead and give them the three minutes and let them, let them talk. I'd like to suspend that 30-minute rule and give everybody at least a three minutes to talk on that.
And do it now.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and that, well, oh, you mean?
Special meeting to actually vote on anything over now.
Yeah, yeah, I would think that that would, yeah, still need to be do, do that. I mean, this is a, this is a irregular deal, and there's a lot of interest out there, so I'd like to give everybody the opportunity to say what's on their mind.
Good. All right. So this is based upon the public information statement. According to the first picture that signed up was Dr. Victoria Calder. Ms. Calder, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I would like for you to consider, before you vote on an investigation, to consider the process and the ramifications. I think it's a very dangerous precedent and a very frightening precedent, a very slippery slope, and questions that you would hopefully consider before you would even consider voting for this. I've been reading this book called Tracker. It's a really good book. It takes place in Burnie, Texas, and I'd never heard of a tracker. In East Texas, we would have called a tracker whoever's hunting's dog, basically a paid peeping tom. During a campaign, a tracker is hired by an opponent to follow their opponent around and track them, stalk them, take pictures of, kind of like what predicated this investigation against Commissioner Eagle, look in their window, take pictures of their garbage, what they're up to, and try to catch them at something. But anyway, I think that for anyone who might ever even consider in the future running for office here in this county, first of all, I would ask you, is that whoever's hunting's dog process a process that you respect enough to carry this forward and vote yes based on that behavior? Is that where we are in Hood County? Is that who we are in this county? I hope not. But basically, the, the questions that anyone who ever might want to run for office would consider is how many days and nights would we be allowed to, to sleep and, and be outside our residence and still have it count as our residence? Don't worry, I don't plan to ever run for office here at all or anywhere, but I'll give myself as an example, when Skip and I got engaged in 2009, I left my house in Highland Park vacant for well over a year while I lived mostly down on the farm with Skip, and we didn't know if we'd end up living back there or on the farm. We ended up here in Granbury, but that was my home. That was my homestead, my only homestead, where I paid taxes. And it, and it's, and when I, when I moved here, I immediately started working in San Marcos and Austin. Every Monday, I drove five hours to work, lived in a hotel during the week, and even after I retired in 2015, continued to be in a different city pretty much every week for Homeland Security until COVID. If I were single, my home on Green Wing Drive would still be my homestead. I would like for you to know, for you to be able to announce, how many days would somebody be allowed by you to live in a place that's not, that is, that is not their homestead and still let their home be considered their home? That's something everyone would need to know. We have neighbors who have second homes, quite a few of them, Rioja Dosa, Florida. What if they got a wild hair to live there most of the year? What if they wanted to take to the open road and, and not be home at all but explore Europe for a year or two? At what point would you declare their home to no longer be their home? I think anyone who ever might want to run for office would want to know, are these peeping toms, these trackers, going to be the predecessors for coming after them? And how many days and nights can we live elsewhere and still have our home be our home? Thank you.
Next, Deborah Seguin.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I would like to highlight just a very few of my thoughts about the petition. After a careful review of the actual petition, petition, it appears to be a combination of innuendo, hearsay, criminal accusations, and assumptions. My second thought is, will the so-called General Services Agreement contract for legal services be used to conduct the requested petition? How will it be funded? Will the legal contractor be the sole processor of the petition request? And which elected official will be investigated next? Those are my thoughts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Seguin. That's Steve Biggers.
Thank you, Court. Ms. Lang is passing out some copies for you, and I want to go over those real quick. These are copies from a couple of different things, one being the county website, and two from the Texas Association of Counties that I've heard quite a few of you guys quote from and stand beside in some of their policies. So, so in these things, it's, they talk about what the Commissioner and the Commissioners' Court do. County website's pretty clear, responsibilities, taxes, budgets, plannings, elections, appointments. The Tax, the Texas Association of Counties is pretty clear, you guys, road and bridges, budgets, hiring, firing, that sort of thing. This is way, way, way out of your all's lane. And, and people that follow this court often, they, they come to expect this from Commissioner Cotton. That's why you got fired from the people in, in Precinct 2. They, they're tired of these antics, and that's what I talk.
Biggers?
One more time.
You are out of line. This is talking about item number six. Don't be attacking individual members.
He, he put that on the agenda. He put that on the agenda. I'm addressing the agenda, Judge.
Any Commission could put anything on the agenda. You keep your comments to number six, or you're going to be asked to leave.
Are we good? Because the last time you did this, I was out there and you decided to show yourself like this. So, well, I throw this to you. I throw this to you, Judge.
Mr. Biggers?
Wait a minute, Judge, you don't get to make, you're.
I wanted to find him out of order.
You don't get to do that. This is the Commissioners' Court. You aren't the king. This is a Commissioners' Court vote. If you want to put it on the, if you want to make a motion, you make a motion.
You have the final say here. You're really going to do this? I'm just trying to make my point across. He's, this is their court, so he's the judge. He's the highest law enforcement official, period. Not you. Not you. You did this the last time when I was out in the aisle, and you showed yourself. Yeah, you did, sir. You yelled at me when I'm six rows back, and now you want to escort me out because you don't want to hear the truth. This falls at your feet. The petty, weak leadership that you show falls at your feet.
Sheriff, you don't, we're not put up with that.
Next up is David Fisher.
My name is David Fisher. I'm 401 East Pearl. I am the current Republican Chair for this county. For this petition, there are two particular, two possible scenarios. The first is that it has to do with a person being on the ballot, in which case this is a matter for the party, not for this court. The second scenario is that this is a matter for whether or not to remove a person once elected. I'd like to read from Texas Local Government Code. This is Local Government Code Title III, Subtitle B, Chapter 87, Subchapter B, Paragraph 87.15. A petition for removal. A procedure for the removal of an officer is begun by filing a writ petition for the removal in a district court of the county in which the officer resides. Any resident of this state which has lived for at least six months in the county in which the petition is to be filed and who is not currently under indictment in the county may file the petition. At least one of the parties who files the petition must swear to it at or before the filing. The petition must be addressed to the district judge of the court in which it is filed. Petition must set forward the grounds alleged for the removal of the officer in plain and intelligible language, and must cite the time and place and occurrence for each act alleged as ground for removal with as much certainty as the nature of the case permits. There's two possibilities. One is that this petition should have been filed with the Republican Party, which it was not. The other is that this petition should have been filed with the district judge, which it was not. This is outside the purview of this court. I would ask that this line item be removed and this special meeting afterwards be canceled. This is not within the purview of this court. Thank you.
Chair, I'm C. Lander.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I don't have a lot to say this morning. I just kind of want to back up something that Victoria had said earlier. I, too, in my job, when I was working, had extended hours that I had to stay in Dallas to work or, you know, long shifts and stuff like that. I had to make arrangements to stay in Dallas during those times. So there's times when I was not at home, I was trying to, you know, stay where I didn't have to travel so far because I did have such long hours. I know you too, Judge, when you were still working as an attorney in Dallas, you also had an apartment there so that you could stay and do business. So these things where people have alternate places to stay to be able to operate their businesses and that, there's many people that do that. So I think you need to take that into consideration and realize that, you know, when a person homesteads, that is their home. I homesteaded at my place that I live with Don and that, but there were many times that I was traveling or I had to stay in Dallas that I was not at my home to do my business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. I'm Paul Holiday. I moved here basically about three years ago, actually to retire and get out of public life. But after being in education and, and administration for 19 years, I find myself in the public light again because I basically have known Mr. Eagle probably more, I know more than any of y'all in here. I've known him for 60 years. This is a man of integrity, character, and basically you can define character of what a man does when no one's around. And this man has the most highly integrity and character of a man I've ever seen. To be brought before and questioned him in any way is absolutely ridiculous. My question is, how many of the 120 petition signers live in Precinct 4 and are registered voters? Have you verified they are all registered voters in Precinct 4? If so, how many of them are? What government code or election law gives the Commission, Commissioners' Court the authority to do what you are doing? Absolutely. I am finding myself to get right back into public life again because I have, I have known this man. And he will do anything the world for this people of, I'm sure, Precinct 4. I kind of wish I was in Precinct 4. Anyway, please look at what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greg Harold.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. So I stand here this morning, and I want to express several areas of concern that I have in regards to your handling and your consideration of this petition. The first, the first thing that I am concerned about is that there are already, as have already been pointed out, there are processes and procedures in place prescribed that dictate how this type of issue is to be handled legally. So I would ask you to consider that as you take up this issue. The second thing is my concern about, and it's already been expressed, about the slippery slope that we will step on if you respond to this petition as a Commissioners' Court. The issue is that we don't want to have governance by petition. Think about what the outcome of that would be. Some of you have seen online, and you can go online and look at these videos, there are literally hundreds, if not thousands, of these videos online where people go out and they'll petition people that they come across, they'll have a petition, hey, do you support the Taliban? And people will sign it. Now, I'm not saying that this is the case here. The people that signed the petition may well have known what they were doing, but the issue is that this is not how governance is accomplished through the Commissioners' Court. Please do not respond to a petition. If you do, think about what the downstream effects of that will be. There will be no end to these kind of issues coming before the court. No end. No end. Everybody can take a petition and bring it before the court. So if Commissioner Andrews, and by the way, I live in, in Commissioner Eagle's precinct and have lived there for over 20 years. But Commissioner Andrews, if somebody takes a dislike to you, there's nothing stopping a citizen to go out and, and, and form a petition. So please do not allow this to happen. This is your responsibility. Take it off the agenda altogether, please. Thirdly, you have a fiscal responsibility. Please do not spend county funds or waste, literally waste county funds on any type of investigation. Finally, and the final issue for me, is can you all understand that if you enter into this type of a position, the devastation that it will bring to the unity on the Commissioners' Court and to this community? Because the community reflects what you five do up here. The leadership, you guys have a great responsibility to have unity among yourselves so that there's unity out in the community. Please, please be unified on this. Thank you.
Tina Brown.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I really wasn't sure I wanted to speak, but I went ahead and filled out the paperwork. So I'm learning a lot of stuff here today. Like whether or not this is your job, I don't know. But since it was brought to this court, I assume you have to act on it or, you know, send it wherever it needs to go. I think most of us know the answer when we're asked, "Where do you live?" It's possible to have permanent address or to be working somewhere temporarily. But where you live is where you spend the majority of your off time. It's where you eat, it's where you sleep, it's where you entertain. Most people, they know where they live. I think it's in the best interest of the community to find out whether this is true or not. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Okay, next.
Judge, Commissioners, my name is Mark Lowery. My wife Karen and I have lived in this county for eight years. We moved down here because of the beauty of this county and the city. Part of the factor that played into it was the conservative base in which this county exists. We believe that that served us. And if anybody would have been at the school board meeting last night, you would have been overwhelmed by the number of people that stated that how this is a conservative, we need to keep the foundation conservative of our policies for our community and our citizens. If you listen real quietly and you smell deeply, you can hear the echo of the federal government and the stench of the federal government that's happening in this situation. It's been clearly pointed out that you don't have the authority. We went through the same process with the newly-elected mayor back last summer. When the other candidates lost, they immediately started filing these false accusations, started to spy on people. The same situation is happening here. There's no substance to this. You have no authority to investigate this. You're going to set a precedent that is damaging to this community for years to come. Under your leadership, sir, I ask that you put this aside, you let it go through the proper processes. The electors have voted. There's another time to come up and vote again. But under this situation, you're setting a precedence that's damaging to this community and damaging for this court for years to come. I ask that you put it aside and we move on with the important business at hand in Hood County. Thank you.
Well, I debated whether I was going to talk or not. I have a great deal of respect for Commissioner Eagle, though we sparred quite a bit. I've been a resident of District Four, voter and taxpayer in his precinct for nearly 30 years. I hear a lot lately about, certainly, the fairness of elections in this country and complaints about elections not being fair. I think the question is, does one have qualifications? Have things been filled out? There were questions raised four years ago when Commissioner Eagle ran, but nothing was done. This petition, which I am not a signer, but people want to know in Precinct Four, are they represented by a person from Precinct Four? Was the application properly filled out for running? And that should be a criteria for every elected office. And so it seems like the court should pursue this. I can't speak to the legalities of the avenue of which it should be pursued, but to know whether someone has legally run is important. Thank you.
I do. Okay. Janet Sparres.
Thank you, everyone, for taking time and letting me talk to you. I'm a CPA, and so I look at this as a financial thing. Part of it is when you get up there and you go through all of these investigations and lawyers and, I work as a volunteer at a law firm, and it's expensive. And there's so many things this county needs. We need roads, we need infrastructure, we need trucks that you talked about. We don't need another investigation. What we need is somebody to take a stand and be for the people, and that's what I want to do. The other thing that I wanted to say is that I've been here a little over a year and a half, and I really enjoy Hood County, I enjoy Granbury. And I did my research when I was voting, and I did vote for Mr. Eagle, and I think that he's the right person. I know that the person that voted against, or that was running against him, said all kinds of things about he doesn't live in his residence. Because I wanted to know exactly what was what. So I did my research. And he did live in our county, and he does represent District Four. And I hope you take that into consideration before you oust somebody that was legally elected, because I see a lot of cancel culture here where, "Well, we're not going to do what the people want. We're going to do what we want." And what the District Four wants is Mr. Eagle. Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Grant Wood. I live at 2315 Lakewood Court, Granbury, Texas. I've lived there for almost 10 years now, and I live in Place Four. I am not certain of the legalities of the Commissioners Court's ability to look into this, but I do think it's important that we clear the air. There's been a lot of talk up until recently, I haven't heard the word transparency used yet, but I would like some transparency about Commissioner Eagle's legal residency. There's a lot of talk about temporary traveling for work. But when you travel for work, you come home to a place. 2315 Lakewood Court is my permanent residence and my homestead and where I spend most of my time. And so I think it's in the interest of the county and in the court and in all the voters here in Hood County to get some transparency and to shine some light on the requirements for running and the requirements for sitting in that chair. And so that way, we understand what the requirements are and what temporary actually means. I would ask you to pursue this to the fullest extent that you're legally capable and to find the place where we can get the answers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Maxwell.
So I am the one that ran against Mr. Dave Eagle, and I'm also the one that was viciously attacked by this man and by a lot of the people that spoke and a lot of people that are sitting there. I did not file this petition. I was not a person that was in charge of leading this petition or anything. When I found out about this petition, I asked for a copy of that petition, and I went around and I asked some of my friends and family to say, "Yeah, would you be in Precinct Four? Would you be interested in signing this petition to find out what, to see if this is, let it go through the legal process to find out if he actually is legally able to sit in this seat?" And the reality is, is that I ran across a lot of people in our precinct that said, "You know, I really want to sign that petition, but I feel like I can't." And the reason why I can't is because first and foremost, I saw what you went through. I saw the vicious attacks that were lodged against you and your family, and I don't want that to be done to my family.
This is on topic.
It is on topic.
Order. 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 Order.
And this is what I'm talking about. Rules for thee, but not for me.
This gets better all the time. You're allowing it to happen. You're allowing it to happen.
I will, here's the reality. There's new evidence that has been presented. This is not a new issue. This has been something that has been questioned for a long time, for the last four years. And so the reality is, there's new evidence that has been presented, and I think that we should have transparency and that we should see the process through. And so I appreciate the members of the Commissioners Court and the judge for doing everything that they can to ensure that citizens' voices are heard, even the silent ones that feel like they can't because they'll be attacked. And that is the reality, is that the people that are yelling at me, they're either misled or they're involved in all of this. And that hackling right there, that's exactly why this needs to be done, because the riffraff needs to be taken out. Thank you.
Judge and Commissioners, thank you all today. I would like to first point out that both Commissioners Ron Cotton and Jack Wilson should recuse themselves from any voting on this matter due to the fact that they endorsed young Mr. Maxwell back there. Beyond that, Judge, you are a man of the law, you are a learned man, you know that this is not the avenue for this petition to go through. You know this good and well, yet you allow it to continue, and one must call into question your ability to lead this court, not only because of that, but the double standards that are routinely set by you, sir. Now, as far as this petition, we have a lot more things going on in this county than digging up witch hunts that remind me of the 2016 stuff where they tried to stop Trump from being president. This is ridiculous, it's a waste of money. That money could go to volunteer fire departments and it could go to a multitude of other things. But instead, you guys should all really consider if you're doing this for the good of the people or if you're doing it because your guys lost. Thank you.
Please come up here and discuss your contract, sir. Proposed contract.
Is that the, is this the place to do that?
Is that properly before the court now, Judge?
Yeah, I don't think it's the right place to do that. That needs to be for the special call meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Well, I would like to make a couple of comments here. I do very much agree that this is the wrong avenue to take this. I've done some research on this subject. I've looked at, well, I even pulled up what the Attorney General opinion on residence. Ken Paxton 0377 goes into that. It's very vaporous, but that's beside the point. Everything that was cited in that was cited district court examples, not individuals suing each other in district court. None of this stuff had to do with the Commissioners Court. We are not a body of examining evidence, determining facts, or investigation. That's not what we do here. That's the job of a district court. The district court can go out and determine these facts and decide if this is something that needs to be looked into. A suit can be brought into district court and the correct avenue can go through this. To kind of firm up my point here a little bit, Election Code 145004, and I think that this is all eventually ending up in, do we remove Mr. Eagle or not? So 145004 of the Election Code says, "A candidate's entitlement to a place on the ballot or to a certificate of election is not affected by judicial determination that the candidate is ineligible until a judgment declaring the candidate to be ineligible becomes final." There has to be a declaration, a judgment, an adjudication that says he's done something wrong before he can be removed from office. That's not something that this body can do. We don't do this. This does establish a very dangerous precedence. This body is by its nature a political body. And if you don't like somebody and you get three votes, what can you do with that? That is a very dangerous precedence, and we don't need to be going down this road at all. This needs to be filed as a complaint in a district court and not on this body right here. I move that we remove this from the agenda and be done with this topic.
Second. I'd like to make a comment, and I agree that I don't think that it is a position of this body to do whatever. This is a real unclear area, which is why I reached out to hire a law firm that specializes in local government for this person who will speak at the special meeting because we didn't get the contract in time, to do an investigation to see exactly what must he file by whom and where. I agree that I don't think that it's the position of a Commissioners Court to remove another commission. That's what I thought. So the ones out here that are clapping the loudest about to think that I'm against them, that's not true. I want to find out what is the correct thing to do, taking into account everybody's rights, the rights of all the citizens of Hood County first, and to protect the rights of Commissioner Eagle second. I want it to be done strictly legally by what the law prescribes, not by who can appear in color in the loudest or who can quibblest the worst or laugh. That's not what it's about. I've been a lawyer for over 50 years. I make my decisions based upon what is the law. So having made that comment, I want to hear what Mr. Charles Hillow, who will be presented at the special meeting after this, to hire his firm to find out exactly what is the correct procedure, what is the right thing to do to protect everybody's rights as a U.S. citizen, as a citizen of Texas, as a citizen of Hood County. That's what should be done. That's what I would like to say, is what I want to be done. Don't want it swept under the rug. I don't want anybody to come out here and use a motion one way or another. Let's just go ahead and see what the real law is about somebody that understands it. And then I tend to agree with Commissioner Andrews that what it's going to take is a petition filed in the district court and the judge making a decision after all the evidence is heard. That's what I think. And you know what? As a U.S. citizen, citizen of Texas, a citizen of Hood County, and practicing the law and having a law license practically all my life, since I've been 24 years old, I will abide by that decision, which is what I hope everybody in this county will do. Will you abide by the legal decision promulgated by whoever has the authority to render that decision? So that's what we're going to vote on. So, and the motion that Mr. Andrew, Commissioner Andrews had just made, he's made a motion to just pull this item off the agenda right now about taking appropriate action in regard to the petition submitted to this court regarding accusations against Dave Eagle, second, by Commissioner Dave Eagle. So that's my discussion. Anybody else have any discussion before we vote?
I do have.
I do have one more thing here. I reached out to Jim Allison. Jim Allison is the Texas Association of Counties, legal guru, if you will. I don't know if I can call him an advisor, and asked him what are some of the, some guidance on this particular topic. And he flat says a proceeding in district court is recommended. You can go through the county attorney to get a quo warranto, removal action. This is an issue that belongs in a court that decides facts, looks at evidence, that kind of thing. It doesn't, it doesn't belong here. We can make, we can get 120 people to sign a petition for just about anything. Every single one of us up here have enemies. When is this?
We're not voting to remove Dave Eagle.
I understand that, but we're voting to go and spend money and to look into It's, it's, no, transparency, there's no question of transparency. Mr. Maxwell, you spoke of evidence. What evidence is there? There are criminal charges in this petition of perjury. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Absolutely let the courts decide. Go to a district court and let it decide.
That's what we're trying to do here. We just want to do it in a proper manner. Who has to do it? When it has to be done? What happens? Spend our money doing it. Order. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, anybody else on the court? Okay? All those in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Andrews to remove item number six regarding taking appropriate action in regards to petition submitted to the court on April 12 regarding accusations against Commissioner Dave Eagle, second by Commissioner Dave Eagle. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion fails three to two. Okay. Now, this brings us to item number seven.
Wait a minute, Judge, I got a statement. If you don't mind, do you mind if I make a statement? Your honor?
You don't call me king, Mr. Eagle.
Well, if it fits, it fits. I published my statement on social media on April the 15th, 2022. Most or many of you have read that statement. I also posted what is determined and called and defined as conclusive evidence establishing my residence on that post. I have nothing further to add to that. As this is not the proper forum to litigate the residency issue at all, if someone's withstanding chooses to challenge my residency, then they can take it up with the district court for determination so we can put this matter to rest once and for all. I refuse to participate and spend taxpayer money on unsubstantiated rumor and innuendo and hysterical allegations by one of the speakers up here, was my opponent who was in the past primary, who could have challenged my residency properly with the Republican chair, and he didn't. The other speaker is a precinct chair for the Democrat Party that came up and spoke against me. The other speaker is my Democrat opponent waiting for me in November. Now, if you don't smell something wrong with that, I don't know what to say. That's all I got.
All right, this brings us to item number seven. Consider take appropriate action to move a vacated security position to a patrol deputy position not to exceed step six, $55,246 effective Tuesday, April 26, 2022.
Judge, Commissioners, I would like to pull that one item agenda. It is worded improperly. I will put it on the next agenda.
You'll pull that?
Pull that one, I will put it on the next one where it's worded correctly.
Okay. What about item number eight?
We'll move forward with that one.
You'll pull that?
No, I will move forward with that one.
So number eight is considered take appropriate action to move a vacated security office position to a patrol deputy position not to exceed step six, $55,246 effective Tuesday, April 26, 2022. Request auditor, take appropriate budget line item.
Judge, Commissioners, I did visit with Becky on this as well as Ms. Welborn, and what we are doing is with the retirement of Mr. Lipscomb from the Justice Center, we're going to move that position into a patrol deputy position, and the actual salary will be less than what Mr. Lipscomb was making here.
Okay. Anything else? Is that appropriate? Is your okay with that, Becky? So we're just moving that position. Anybody have any notes or comment or question? Do I hear somebody make appropriate protest, please?
I move that we approve the, and move a vacated security position to a patrol deputy position not to exceed step six at $55,246 effective Tuesday, April 26, 2022.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to move a vacated security office position to patrol deputy position not to exceed the step six, $55,246 effective Tuesday, April 26, 2022, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion or question? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously five zero. Okay, the last item on this agenda is consider and take appropriate action to donate surplus metal or panels to lock in and better school district. Mr. Dave Kilo.
Yes, good morning, Judge, Commissioners. So there were some metal roughing removed from some county buildings, and as we're preparing to auction those, it's come to our attention that there's been some other, some better use recommended. First off, environmental health, I believe, has use for some of these, and Commissioner Andrews suggested that Lipan ISD would be a good place to possibly donate the balance of those panels.
I'd like to add that, you know, having discussed with Commissioner Andrews and with Environmental, that, you know, the need, the small amount that environmental needs for, you know, their use, you know, comes before the actual product is delivered to Lipan ISD.
Very good. Yep. Good with that, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, so the motion is that...
Well, hadn't had a motion yet. That was just kind of the caveat to it. Yes, sir, I'll make a motion that we donate the surplus R panels to Lipan ISD after Environmental has pulled what they need out of that.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and second, that the metal be donated to Lipan School District after the county pulls out the metal that they need. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion unanimous five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the regular Commissioners' Court is now over, and it's 17 minutes till 11.